Operator Eric.
Nope.
Here it is.
Okay.
We're already started.
Thank you. Good evening, this is the Enfield Planning Board. It is April tenth, twenty twenty four. I'm calling the meeting to order at six thirty P M. We are in the D P W conference room and also online using the Teams video conferencing platform. Members present, and I will introduce John Kluge, who used to sit at
Or Kluge.
Our Kluge.
Yeah.
See, I, I, there was a kid in my dorm in college whose name was Kluge, and that just kind of stuck in my head. So apologies, John.
No problem. I've, I've been through worse.
So have I. Anyhow, for those of you who don't know or don't remember the new folks, John used to be our ex-officio member. And this year, he is still on the select board. But since they have five members now, they have decided that they can appoint alternates. So Eric is unable to attend tonight. And John, welcome.
Thank you. I had my start in town governance as on the planning board.
Oh, no kidding?
Yeah. You were there. We were both.
That's when you started?
Yeah. Yeah. And we were both alternates. He always got there before I did. So after a while, I said, well, I think I'll go do something else. So I ran for the Z B A.
Uh huh.
Yep.
Okay, moving right along on attendance or introductions.
Dan Kylie, vice chair.
David Frack.
Silver mirror.
Brad Rich.
Tim Jennings.
Kurt Carthart.
Alternate.
Alternate.
And on teams.
Linda Jones.
Live from Florida. Staff people here tonight.
Rob Taylor.
Okay. Public comments. Anyone, you're not public.
No, but don't forget to make the announcement that if you're up there and your camera's on, the world's gonna see nothing but you for the next two hours.
Don't forget anybody has to.
Okay.
So should I turn my camera off?
If you want the world to stare at you for the next two hours, you might want to.
Is that the way it works on teams?
The way it works.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And you'll be amazed what some people do. Have no clue.
No people are watching them, yes.
Okay.
It just seems that if I speak, though, I should turn the camera on.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
David, we do have a member of the general public here?
Yes, we have two members of the public.
This is a Z B A member here, yeah.
He's general public tonight. Last night, he was at the table as Z B A member. And you are?
I am Betty Flicka, and I live on Crystal Lake Road. And I had a great conversation with Rob today, and he told me, calm down. And he said, this is your chance to voice concerns. And I don't know whether it's appropriate here or what, what exactly everything is, because I just moved into my father's, the house my parents built in June. So I'm sort of getting used to being a resident.
Well, welcome to Enfield.
Thank you. I've been here since then for.
That, that, this is the time of the meeting when public is free to speak on anything that is not on the agenda.
Okay.
So what's on your mind?
One of, I have a couple of things, and because I live on Crystal Lake, those are the things that I feel most, you know, passionate about. So one of the things was that last year, we had a huge drawdown of water. And lots of people's, I don't even have a boat, so that didn't affect me. But lots of people's boats ended up very rapidly on the ground. And my major concern is about cyanobacteria. And the shallower the lake is, the greater the preponderance for booms to happen. And so I would hope, and I had a long conversation with Rob about my concern about the housing project going in as to whether or not they use this water. And Rob said, no, that's not, they would use wells. So that was like, you know, it was great to have that discussion. And just, you know, whatever can be done about ensuring that the lakes, which are a big draw for the the out-of-state population or, or locals that are not Enfield residents, at least, you know, have about coming here and having lakes that are, you know, hopefully free of cyanobacteria for as long as they can be free of cyanobacteria. And also how the watershed area affects the lake. And I happened to actually take my first ride over onto Holly Drive the other day. And I saw all these streams that are coming down like crazy into the lake, whereas on my side, I know there's a few little places, but it's not like the other side. And, you know, I just wanted to know that the people of Enfield have to be cognizant of the fact that, you know, we pay great taxes by being on the lake. And I really would hope that the town of Enfield would consider trying to help the residents deal with any number of things that crop up regarding the cyanobacteria. So I know that there are some, you know, obvious issues about people not dealing with septic tanks, let's say. I don't know if there could be something that's a tax benefit if people get their septic taken. Like, I moved up and I got my septic cleaned right away. I couldn't remember when my parents had had it done and they're not around to ask. So that was the first thing I had done. But, you know, you get the feeling that there are people that might not be doing that. But if there was some sort of benefit to them, then it's a benefit to everybody.
Certainly. I think some of that is possible. I know we are going to be, well, we're in the process, actually, of discussing zoning rewrites. And possibly the septic regular cleaning would be addressed as part of zoning. Not a hundred percent sure. But we are contemplating a lakeshore zone, which has specific requirements and takes into account the as-built and the way the lakes developed over many, many years, rather than, like, Crystal Lake is basically three-acre zoning. And, and, and I don't think there's more than one or two lots that are three acres. So we're, we're, we're looking on that. As far as the drawdown, I do not know why that happened.
That's the, that's the state that controls that.
Yeah. Why, why did they?
Because Lebanon is running out of water. And so they need to get water into Mascoma and then into the river so that Lebanon could have water. And I had the same issue. The real problem was that there was no notification. And so you, you wake up one morning and your boat's on the, on the sand. And had you had, you know, a couple of days, you could have pulled your boat and things would have been fine. So there were a number of people that complained, and I think that they listened. So hopefully.
Citywide spread?
What's that?
Department of Environmental Services? There's a Dan Bureau?
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, 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 I think you're right. I think you're right.
It is. So like, private trucks who bring water to people's pools and stuff that would.
That's allowed by state.
Right, I know, but it's like here we were so low.
Yeah.
And they were still taking water out of the lake. And then you sit there and say, you know, I don't think at that point we realized that there would be this cyanobacteria.
Right.
Like scourge on our lake.
Well, the, the, the big reason, my humble opinion, but just so you know, the Conservation Commission is doing a watershed, we should talk to John, a wa- a watershed plan for the whole area, including Crystal Lake. And that's really, really important. And it's interesting that you drove down Holly Drive, because we've had massive issues on all of those. There's thirteen culverts. And if a big hill comes in, it's nuts.
I was really stunned.
Yeah, it's really crazy. And so something has to be done, or the, the, the lake is getting damaged now. But I think the Conservation Commission knows it. They're working with the select board, they're working with the state, and hopefully we'll see some progress there, hopefully.
Thanks for your input, Brad. Sorry, I learned a lot. Anything else on your mind? Okay.
I thought that we might rubber into some service.
I, I was gonna wait for her to show up a second time.
Oh, no, I will. I will, I'm volunteering with the town with the uh, wait.
Library?
No, I wish.
Town clerk?
No, wait, 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 the checklist, the supervisor.
Okay, good.
So I'm, I'm doing all the appetizing and going through their records.
Somebody under eighty. Thank you.
Let's see. Dr. Buffay, we are in public comment time. Is there anything you want to talk about that's not on the agenda?
I, I think it's, it's follow-up of some of the discussion from last, last meeting. And Rob and I spoke about it.
Last night or?
This, this morning.
Last night.
The, the meeting, well, it was actually both meetings last time. About looking at comparables for height limits for, for zoning for nearby towns. That is a suggestion of Hanover, Lebanon, and Plainfield being the obvious ones. Canaan, Canaan doesn't, it doesn't have zoning. But as you look ahead to developing that, perhaps in different zones of the town, that having, having comparables gives some legitimacy to any proposals.
I, I think we are gonna be looking at zoning regs from several surrounding towns. I don't want to get into a discussion about what might be until after we've had our public input session, because I, I don't want to give the impression that the board has any preconceived ideas. So.
Understandable and not a problem. I just sort of expect that to be a, a, a good way of, of dealing with some of the concerns that are out in the community.
Tim?
To that end, don't forget, the board, the last meeting has certainly approved, but had no objection to me looking at some specific buildings in town to try to get the actual measurements of, like, say, the village school. Already got the Great Stone Dwelling and various others to add to the report I did about a year ago, which, when that, when that's done, I'll provide that. And also will include about twelve different surrounding towns and what their high restrictions are.
Okay, you're already doing.
Yeah.
So that, that information will come to the board here for their further considerations later.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If, if you are waiting for a go-ahead to start taking measurements, from what I recall of the conversation last, not last week, but last meeting, go for it.
We gave them the authority, right?
Yeah. Yeah, it did.
I just hadn't been out there.
Yeah. Okay, so go ahead and.
Snowing.
No trespassing.
Exactly.
With us.
Without, you know, permission from the landowner.
Yep.
Anything else, Dr. Buffay? Dan, any comments, questions? Okay. Moving right along. We have no hearings, no conceptuals. John, would you like to give a select board report?
No, I wouldn't.
Okay.
Not prepared to do that.
All right. Legislative report. The legislature did not meet last week. Therefore, I have nothing to say.
Okay, cool.
Rob, it's your turn.
Obviously, we had a pretty big Z B A meeting last night. We had a good crowd. I think we had maybe forty people in person. We had maybe twenty-six unique Zoom attendees or Teams attendees. They had sort of a wide-ranging discussion. They talked a lot about findings of fact. And they also had a second hearing, not a secondary first hearing, second one of the night for a Algonquin Road property. So they granted a variance for a replacement of a very outdated, dilapidated shed that's seriously encroaching on Algonquin Road, so close to the road that the snow plow literally pushes snow right up against that building. So they actually got approval last night to move that shed further back. It's always my fun term, less non-conforming. And.
Very familiar with that term.
You're very familiar, yes. But that's sort of what we do in, in zoning in this town. We do a lot of those kind of variances, as we've discussed. And obviously, our future zoning ordinance should definitely address that. Hopefully, you'll see. The Laramie Farms hearing was continued again, so we'll be meeting again, most likely in, in May, on the fourteenth. There's some talk about trying to bump that up a little bit. So obviously, some difficulties in doing that. We're working with our town council and the Z B A chair to try to figure that out. But last night, if I was describing it, and you were here virtually, maybe a few of your others, and we're sitting at the table, you were here. It didn't seem super, you know, animus last night. It was, it was much more civil, a lot less. Obviously, the people that had come the first hearing had said their, spoke their mind and were encouraged, unless they had something new to add that, that was still in the record, their original comments. And so the developer was able to present a ton of new drawings and perspectives and photos. One of the things, I think the thing that was most helpful is they, they did fly a drone over the site last week and had some, some good shots that sort of represent where the building is gonna be. And they were also able to sort of superimpose the building height in the surrounding tree canopy. So if you guys want to take a look at some of that, that's still hanging out there, the two variants request from the applicant. They will continue that. We are under a little bit of a timeline there. It's ninety days from the date of the application to when we need to render a decision. The way that the law is written, we can, if it's getting close and the, and the applicant is like, I want a decision, the Z B A can deny it. And it's denied without prejudice, which that means is they can come right back and apply again if they want to the following month. So I think it's in the applicant's best interest to sort of see it through to a healthy completion and get a real vote, as opposed to just, we're, we're done. You know, like that kind of a thing. So that's hanging out there. I did want to pass this around. Yes.
Did the Z B A correct what was an incorrect statement they made before about, I think it was something that affected the planning board was going to do away with height restriction.
Yes, he did at the very beginning of the hearing. He did have a statement to say, basically, that he was wrong to, to say it like that at the beginning of the first hearing. And that there's no decisions that have been made. And obviously, it's up to you guys, select board, and the general public to make those decisions through a, a very long and thought-out process. And so hopefully, that set it straight. I mean, it was kind of something that we had talked about ahead. David was at that first meeting and had the comments. And I think you actually communicated with the chair. We did. We also communicated with the, the town manager. And so that was what the decision was, was basically to try to set the, the record straight at the second meeting. Luckily, the, the hearing is still technically going on. I mean, it's a continuation of the first one. So that's in the record and will be obviously, you know, clarified, that point.
Yeah, I, I would say he did an excellent job of correcting his misstatements in regard to the activities of this board.
Yeah, he'd sort of taken it as true. Is it fait accompli? Like, that's, that's a done, was a done deal, but it's nowhere near that, as you guys know intimately. I mean, even if you guys want it, it's still not a done deal.
Right.
Until we actually have a vote at town meeting.
Yeah, yeah. I have a procedural question. I don't know if that can be fixed or maybe in the future. I was watching online when the applicants or anybody is talking and showing plaque maps or something off to the sides. Nobody online gets to see what you're talking about. Now, I don't know if he was demonstrating, showing those things.
We were sharing, could you see the shared documents that we were sharing?
Well, I saw what he posted on, but that was, it has, if it's not going through the computer, nobody online sees it. You can hear them talking, and this over here is their.
Could you see him that, could you see, he was standing right here? Could you see him?
No. Well, I saw the back of.
You saw the what? Yeah, we see the back.
Just the back. You don't see what he's talking about. That's one of my points.
So I don't know, I mean.
So it's.
What is the solution there? We do, we do put the disclaimer. You have to come to the meeting. That's what we do.
At some point, we're gonna need a second camera just for documents.
No, no.
He's in screen share.
That's what we were doing. But you can't screen share on there, because it's not on the computer. You can only screen, so you have something on the computer.
The, the applicants, I'm sure in Lebanon and over, where they get more equipments.
Right.
More, and they've been doing it for a while. They bring some electronic version.
Right.
That gets shown and shown on the big screen.
So they, they, they shared with us that document that had ninety percent of the stuff that you see in that. And we were scrolling through that as the shared screen.
Most of it was on.
Most of it was on there. The only problem we were having is this, I'm working with the town manager. It's time to replace this machine. This is a second generation hand-me-down. It was Ryan Ellsworth's computer. Then it was Elise's, and then it was here. It's time to throw this thing in the dumpster. I want a, I want a high-powered machine to sit here, because we were, it was noticeable last night.
It was a genuine problem, yeah.
Yeah, it's like, it was hesitating and sort of gets behind.
I couldn't even get on.
What's that?
I couldn't even get on.
You couldn't get on the meeting?
I waited fifteen minutes. About twenty after seven, it never got admitted.
So, yeah, that's, that's, that's a problem too.
And I'll explain it to them later.
Yeah, yeah. So again, that's why we put the disclaimer on. If you want to be guaranteed your ability to participate, you have to come in person. We, we, we disclaim it as a courtesy service. There's no guarantees. I mean, a pine tree could fall on the internet cable out here in the middle of the meeting. We have no idea. It's, you know, we're, we think we're still pumping it out to the general public, but.
A higher-powered computer with help.
Exactly. I think Linda's gonna weigh in on that. Linda, you have a comment. You're on mute, Linda.
On mute.
On mute, Linda.
Yep, yep.
Okay, there we go.
I couldn't get on last night either. I, I tried ahead of time and, and for about half an hour, it just, it just, nothing happened. So, anyway, thank you. I feel better.
Yes, okay, yes.
Anything else, Rob?
So the only other thing I wanted to share with you, I mean, like, I always say, you probably get sick of me saying it, it's, it's busy, a lot of stuff going on. We do have a, a possible developer looking at the Bob La Croix. I think I mentioned that to you recently. It's gonna come down, I, I think it's gonna be a selectman and town manager decision, because the developer's actually also interested in land that's not in Enfield, but it's adjacent to our Enfield land. And their question for, it'll be for the selectman and the town manager to answer, is sewer connectivity. Because obviously, development nowadays, most developers need municipal treatment. They're not gonna do what Lakeview did forty-something years ago and put a, you know, thirteen leach field system in that ultimately is, is destined for failure. So their curiosity is, would the town be willing to negotiate on that? You know, if we talk to the public works manager, it's like, no way, we paid money. We've invested, it's, you know, and of course, it's really maybe not our decision either. It's gonna be Lebanon, because that's where the ultimate destination of our sewage is.
We, we have a ton of room available.
Yep.
That's never gonna be a factor.
Yeah. But I, I think in that case, it might be Canaan as the municipality that would have to step up and actually sort of ante in to play the game, you know, thereby some of our. Exactly, exactly. Whether Lebanon would let us do that? Right, that's high-level stuff way out of my, so that's some negotiations going on behind the scenes.
Just a comment.
Yep.
The mistake that was made when the sewer system was first built was that it was going to be partly run by Enfield and partly run by Lebanon. What should happen, I think that experience has proven this out, what should have happened, it should have been an extension of the Lebanon sewer system into Enfield. And so you would have had, over the years, eleven sewer department trucks driving through Enfield, maintaining this, this system.
Yeah.
That's what should have happened. We didn't do that. And so the thought of having our sewer system extended to Canaan as a regional system is not far-fetched and should be given consideration.
Absolutely.
Yeah, right. Yeah, and, and, and the result now, to exactly your point, Tim, is that we're now double-charging new connections.
We are.
You get an Enfield connection and a Lebanon development charge. And it's very expensive, as you're probably well aware. Yep. I'm gonna pass this around. This is something that Tim had requested the last time around. This is a list of building permits, two-day, from January one. Maybe it'll be some good reading for you. It's much more detailed. So hopefully, you'll be able to see, you'll see name, you'll see date, you'll see permit number, you'll see the address, and you'll see the project description with all that and lot numbers. So you can see, we're up to, as of this morning, when Chantel printed this out, we're on permit number thirty-one for the year, which is pretty even with where we were last year at this point. I think we were within one or two permits of last year's rate. But you'll see, not a lot of single-family homes on here. A lot of solar, a lot of minor projects. I'll pass it around you during the meeting, you guys can review it. And if you have any questions, feel free to throw them at me later in the meeting or after the meeting, or call me tomorrow, whatever you want to do.
Well, just one thing. Will they, will they post this on the website?
We don't as a matter of course, but that could be a select board decision that they'd like us to, would absolutely be something we could do.
Yeah, I mean, if it was on the website, then it could just be a reference item that you wouldn't have to report on or.
Yeah.
I think there, you know, it, it's public record, but I think there might be some objection to in terms of, in terms of privacy.
Lebanon has theirs.
Can't see that being an issue.
Yeah, you, you might, I think you're right. You will have that. We had it when we, when we put G I S into service. There were some people like, I don't know, I want people to know where my well is on my property. This is, this is the day of Google Earth, you know, I know right where everything is on your property. I know where your shed is, I know everything. So there's very little privacy in reality, but I think there's still an expectation for some people. So it's sort of.
It's a balance.
It would be town manager, select board. But would it mean, it's obviously information we have, we can currently post it. That's, if that's a decision that's made further up.
Higher up.
Yep.
Anything else?
That's it. And any, any questions, call me anytime.
Let me, let me backtrack and tease a little bit of legislative possibility. Tomorrow, the House is voting on a bill that would add three engineers to the D O T staff. And it would also impose some specific timelines for D O T to act on driveway permits. So.
That's awesome.
We will see how that.
Is it an ought to pass, or is it unlikely to pass?
I think it's an ought to pass. I, I can look it up on my computer.
Inexpedient to legislate is the other word they use, I like that.
Yeah.
They're getting a lot of pressure. D O T is getting a lot of pressure.
No kidding, no kidding.
They deserve, I'm, I'm part of it.
Well, and they're getting a lot from towns, because it's, it's slowing up housing. And housing is the governor's big deal, so I suspect three, three more engineers will get approved.
Okay, next, we have minutes from.
Awesome.
Wendy's not here, as you can tell, but she's gonna be watching the recording.
Yeah.
So if you have anything, just call it out as a line item.
Anybody have any comments, questions?
I did not have any. Nope. She's awesome.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes as written.
So I hear a second motion made by Dan, seconded by Brad. Because Linda is joining us virtually, we are going to do a roll call vote. Linda, on the minutes.
I, uh, I. Approved.
Approved. John, you're gonna abstain?
I will abstain.
Dan?
I.
I will vote I.
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 Same. Uh, we are approving with two abstentions. Next, Hop Grant. Where are we?
I have something for you guys to pass around.
Just back up a minute, it's six one, it's extension, he's, he's not even ultimate today because we've got seven people sitting.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Yeah. So it's six one.
It's an ultimate, so.
Right, it's, it's six one.
Six one, next.
So I have a copy of a new draft zoning map from the contractors. Incorporating suggestions from you guys last meeting. Tim, I think you forwarded me some, some information that I forwarded up to them. Um, they sent me back, uh, Vernon, and then we talked actually last week. And one of the new things that we did was, we decided to go back to the colors that we already used.
Right.
That are already there, because they were, they had changed all the colors. I was like, why do we need to do that? Why do we need to continue with at least the same colors? So this is what they've given us for a graph that you guys review.
And I, I think we need to be very clear to the, the public, these are just draft ideas to be, to be discussed with the public.
Mm-hmm.
We're making no decisions, we're just, these are what we're thinking in terms of thoughts. What do you think?
Exactly. When you do the public or even just for, for us, eleven by seventeen would be helpful. I think absolutely, especially like.
What makes you say that?
Yeah.
I had just a general comment about that. In our existing ordinance, we referenced the, uh, official zoning map, and I noticed that all those other ordinances, I didn't read them all. Uh, the ones I sent around.
Um, oh, Linda needs a copy.
Most of those.
I'll email Linda a copy.
Most of those, um, reference the boundaries.
Yeah.
Via the map.
Right.
And in our existing ordinance, we've got several sections here. Then snorely along Flanders Street to point four hundred feet from Route Four, and then it's easterly along Route Four to, you know.
That's, that's been some of the ones I read as well. It was, it was the map and the text.
Yeah, so my question, I guess, would to the consultants would be, do we really need this verbal version?
Yes.
Yes.
You, you do, because that's essentially a meets and bounds survey or the equivalent thereof. And if there's ever any question or dispute about where a boundary between zoning area A and zoning area B is, you go back to the written document just as you would with a land survey.
Well, that may be our experience, but several of the zoning ordinance don't have that. So I suggest that there's probably an option there to either have it or not. And I don't know which is best, um, but I suspect they would know.
I went to written.
The written is because map is reference. Uh, your ma, your, your, your map is normally in the appendix and it's a, it is basically a reference only.
Yeah, yeah.
The actual zoning is based on the property lines, the four hundred feet of Flanders Street. Appreciate everyone's understanding and impression of this, but this is a question I'm asking the, the consultant to please address for us.
Yeah.
I don't wanna just, I just wanna accept what we've always done as the answer to that, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I appreciate that, but if, I just think the written, like a deed is written. It's like someone back there, which one you said, um, eliminates any ambiguity and helps you stay out of court.
Well, I don't know, City Lebanon somehow manages without it.
Any?
So, that's my question.
Well, they have lots of more larger sizes, City Lebanon put in a lot of, but if you do this, stuff too, so that might be.
Sorry, I missed what you said, Tim.
Aaron got a budget of solar going in.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's impressive.
Talking about the map.
Yeah.
It, do you, so the question is to the consultant, do you have to have a written meets and bounds description of the district?
Ah.
And the official zoning map? Or can you have one and the other? Uh, well, or, or can you have just the official zoning?
Okay, good question.
And what, you know, what do they advise about that?
My guess is because it's, uh, the map is obviously gonna be published in the small format most everywhere, even, I mean, that's, that's a big map right there. But that's not really a big map. I mean, it's, it's what we have, obviously. So you kinda have, to get down to the granular level with a lot, you'll know exactly where that boundary is for a zone district. If you're just using the map, it's gonna be hard. Well, where does that, well, cut?
Right, and let's, let's ask them.
Yeah, good, absolutely good question.
Yeah, personally, I think having both is advantageous because sometimes, sometimes you need the visual and sometimes you need the granularity of, of the written description. Uh, let's see, what are we doing? We are, well, I can talk about that under master plan. Anything else on Hop Grant, Rob?
Um, we are making preparations for the event, two events on May ninth and May eleventh at the Enfield Community Building. Um, I've been in communications with them about what we need for tables and chairs and projectors and that kinda stuff, so.
Have we set anything up with the lake owners yet?
Yes, I've been in communication with the, uh, president of the Mascoma Lake Association and through Shirley Green, Glenn is her, her husband, is the president of Crystal Lake. And we're trying, we're working on the schedule there. Um, Martha, uh, Rich is the president of Mascoma.
Mascoma.
And she's out of town, so she's thinking sometime in May, may, maybe slightly after those events. Uh, we're gonna try to do it virtually with, with an in-person option because we do have, we still have a lot of out of town, lakefront people that.
Yeah.
Would love to participate. I mean, I talked about it with Betty today, so we're, uh, yeah, we're definitely working to try to get those two organizations to come in. Uh, Steve Whitman and I have talked about, you know, he's gonna help facilitate that and maybe try to extract as much help as we can from those two organizations.
Uh, refreshing memories about the ninth and eleven, what's supposed to happen most of the days?
Those are immediate, uh, community forums.
Right.
Associated with the Hop Grant and the Master Plan.
Yeah.
Uh, and will be facilitated, uh, at the community building. They're gonna actually, uh, the resilience, which is our contractor for both projects, uh, are gonna do, uh, that sort of facilitation of extracting community feedback.
Is it gonna be mixed or they gonna, it's gonna be definitively separated between the master plan and the zoning?
I think it's gonna be integrated, the two, the two of them.
Yeah.
Um, uh, what I think is being contemplated, and I unfortunately got caught up in post eclipse traffic on Monday.
Yeah, as did everybody.
As did the whole, everybody in northern New England. Um, so I was not able to attend the meeting, I'm just getting caught up on it. Um, there will be a series of stations around the room and questions and.
Similar to what we did.
Um, it, it.
Cause we moved people from station to station.
Yeah, but I, I don't think it's gonna be as formal or as re- require people to, to stay there for the full three or four hours.
So it's similar to what we did outside.
Yes.
Well, be careful, cause that's the first farmer's market, May eleventh.
That's.
Intentional.
That's why we have.
That's what I mean.
Yeah.
So people can drop in and maybe.
Yeah.
Across.
You know, people can, can walk in, spend fifteen, twenty minutes, half an hour, whatever they feel comfortable doing. Going around from station to station, each of the five, um, topics, the, the committees for the five topics have prepared, I guess, four or five questions each that they would like to have public input on. We're in the process of refining those questions.
We need to do the same thing on the zoning.
Yeah, we need to be talking about that here.
Yeah, and it's meant to be real open ended questions, like, I'll give an example on recreation. It's like, everybody kinda knows, well, most people know what we do right now. That's like, what do you want in the future? Well, you know, do you want expansion? Do you want contraction? Is everything we're doing now perfect, you know? And if we did something new, what would you want to see? Those kinda things, so. We did, we did a lot of work on that on Monday.
Can, can you throw those questions up on the big screen?
I can go to the document, sure.
Asking zoning questions, uh, will be a bit trickier, right?
A lot trickier.
So, you, you've gotta, you, I, I agree with Rob, it's gotta be an open ended question, right? And we gotta talk about housing.
Yeah.
All right. And, um, and at the same time, we've gotta be able to glean information from their answers.
Yep.
So it's gonna be a pointed, open ended question.
Mm-hmm. And I, I'm confident that Steve and his crew will be able to help us and develop the language on that.
Yep, yep, yep.
Cause that's what they do.
That's what they do.
So, um, hi- his group or these, sorry, these two forums. Um, I think they're gonna focus on mainly the rural district and the village, yes?
I think it's gonna be wide open.
I think it has to be wide open.
It does.
Yeah.
Right? Because we've gotta get the public's input and everybody has a different viewpoint of what's right, what's wrong.
Mm-hmm.
So we, I don't think we can, well, maybe I
shouldn't have worded it that way. Uh, we, we talked about, um, having separate forums to talk about the lake district, Shaker Village, maybe one or two others. Where we can more specifically focus on those areas.
That's what he mentioned about Lake Association, that'd be a little bit later in May for that purpose.
All right.
But you're right, we, we did talk about other segments of the.
And, and, and the consultant said they don't have it in their budget to.
To do the whole thing.
To do those.
Right. Now, to, to that end, um, the state has released, and I can't remember the number, it's either. So I have reached out to the operator. Asked question. I've asked, uh, if A, if we could apply for another phase three and if we could combine the two, the two, basically just to extend our time window. And I have not yet heard back, assuming that that's something that they would wanna discuss, uh, as a granting board, and I'm not sure how often they meet. So I will, I will follow up on that, uh, probably next week, if I have not heard from them. Um, I've also asked Rob to reach out to Steve Whitman and get some potential budget figures. So, there's, there, there's a possibility that the playing field might change. Um, which would be great from our point of view.
Certainly would, would it?
Mm-hmm.
I don't think you can, can't plan on that though.
I, I, I'm not planning on it, I'm just throwing it out there so that everybody is aware that the possibility exists. Um, you know, if, if they answer in the affirmative to my letter, I wanna be one of the first towns to be submitting a grant because they do it on a rolling basis, or at least the last time they did. And certainly, you know, what we're doing with our zoning rewrite impacts housing greatly. So, we'll see. I'm hopeful. My fingers are crossed.
Excellent. Uh, do you wanna, uh, formalize those, um, subcommittees or working groups?
I don't think we need to. I, I think, you know.
Well, are they in effect? Are we okay to go?
Yeah, didn't I send you an email that said, go ahead?
No, you said you're gonna wait till tonight to. Yeah.
Okay, well.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay.
You're good, you're good to go. Okay, yeah, so let's, let's, let's look at these, um.
This is page one, recreation is the first. One, and there's the first question, what does recreation mean to you? Again, that's a very open ended.
Mm-hmm.
You're gonna get a lot of. You think Enfield currently has enough recreation opportunities available to community members? Yes, no, somewhat? Please explain. Uh, what kind of new recreation opportunities, programs, facilities or spaces you would like to see in Enfield? Or do you know what recreation programs are offered in Enfield? If so, where do you currently get your recreation program information? Utilize per, programs, spaces in other communities. That's recreation, scrolling down, next, uh, area of, uh, concern is heritage and preservation. Do the terms heritage and historic preservation mean to you as they relate to Enfield? So Enfield heritage and history important to you? Why or why not? Just want historic cultural resources should be preserved or protected in Enfield, check all that apply. You have, we talked about maybe ranking them the other night. I'm sure the town works to preserve these resources in the future. Moving on to conservation. Favorite natural areas, visit or recreate?
That'll be an interesting.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Satisfied with Enfield's current amount of conservation land? Priorities of future conservation, natural resource protection in Enfield, other specific land and water resources you feel, feel need further protection. Betty?
I like.
Crystal Lake. So we'll definitely want your input at this, hopefully you can come.
I'll add another page to.
How could Enfield better steward or manage its natural resources? Mechanisms may include strategic land conservation, strengthening land use regulations, public education. So you can see where this is, is a master plan, but also has connotation to, uh, zoning. Public education, public access, trail management. Biggest concerns related to conservation, natural resource protection, check all that apply. Here we go, town facilities and services. Are you satisfied with existing town facilities, services, facilities, including town owned buildings, sites such as the library, town offices, athletic fields. Services include, services provided by the town include waste management, public safety, water, sewer, parks and recreation. I would add highway, right? That's a big one. Services do you see as being essential? So the town facilities, infrastructure, services, they need improvement in the coming years. Brad, I'm gonna say you're, you're looking at Lock Haven Road above Holly Drive.
Really?
I'm, I'm, I'm asking you.
Oh, God, yeah.
Stormwater management is one way to protect Enfield's water quality. Do you support town led initiatives to increase stormwater management strategies? Again, I think that's, that's going right to zoning.
Yeah, everybody's talking about that.
Stormwater management.
Really important.
What better ways do you think the town could educate or assist property owners to better manage stormwater on their properties? Here's energy and sustainability. You can see they want four or five questions from each one.
But before you go on to energy, um, uh, I think some of the discussion might have been, um, uh, asking or is it appropriate to ask, what are you willing to pay for as a taxpayer?
That definitely came up.
And, um, I, I got an email from. And um, I, I got an email from, it was either Liz or Lindsay on, on that very question. And my response was uh, what are you willing to pay for? Was one of the major tenants that came out of the very first focus group that our consultants. Um, had way back in the fall of twenty eighteen.
Was it?
Yeah. So uh, I would expect that these questions on town services. Will be massaged a little bit more and include something about. What they cost and what kind of effect, excuse me, they will have on the average taxpayer. So I, I think that's, that's an important uh tenant that we started out with. And I think we should keep doing it.
Yeah.
I hope everybody is in agreement.
The taxpayers are grumpy already.
Absolutely right.
Yes, we are.
But it's the eternal struggle of municipality.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Tough decisions have to be made.
But I think this is, this is good work for the town to be doing this kind of stuff and say, well, in next year's budget cycle, we say, well, last year when we asked people. They didn't want to pay for this, or they wanted to pay for this, you know, those are the kind of things. I know we're having discussions, obviously a big cost in the town is solid waste, uh trucking disposal, all that stuff. And do we start adding in some more user fees? Cause the people that make trash more than others should pay more than others. Uh, in Plainfield, that's how we do. We have a sticker. Every bucket of trash you put out has to have two dollars fifty cent sticker on it. But in Plainfield, it's funny, they're, they're kind of saying to us, well, let's just include it in our taxes. We don't have to do all this. Cause I gotta go run to the store and get a sticker every Monday morning.
Fair way to do it.
Yeah.
These user fees, it's the only fair way.
Yeah. And again, I know it, it sort of penalizes people for generating more trash.
Well, we don't want to debate that.
No, no. I'm going to move on to energy and sustainability. Climate change, renewable energy, sustainability to you? How important do you think town needs? Do more to mitigate climate change and the impacts from extreme weather events such as flooding, droughts, severe storms? What more do you think the town could do? Biggest challenges, opportunities, Enfield pacing when it comes to energy and sustainability? See, will produce more renewable energy? Municipal property, private property, other?
Yes.
Enfield moving to energy independence, resilience. The question here was, is it municipal? Uh, energy independence, or is it residential energy independence? That's a question we've got to come up with before the.
Right.
Forums. And that's it. That's what we got so far.
So nothing on the housing zoning side yet?
No.
No, cause this is the master plan.
This is the master plan.
I, I would imagine we'll be talking to Steve Whitman and Mark one more time.
Right.
Yeah.
Before this.
Right.
And I'm sure that'll be high on the.
We need to make sure it's on their list so that they can come prepared.
And hopefully give us some questions beforehand that we can start thinking about.
Yeah.
Dr. Buffet.
Just the information, um, are those two lists in parallel that uh everything other than uh municipal facilities and services? Is covered on May ninth and?
No, no, that's, that's, those, those two do not go together. I keep looking at it and saying the same thing.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Draw, draw a big vertical line.
Yeah.
Put a box around master plan phase two or something.
Yeah.
Um, the, the I, the idea is that there will actually be three distinct opportunities. For people to give us input. One will be on May ninth in the evening. The second will be on May eleventh, late morning to early afternoon. And following that, we will put the same questions and possibly a few more. Up on the Enfield Leaps website so that people can answer the questions online. If they did not have an opportunity, come in person.
So, so the intention is to do one of those three?
Yes. Yes.
Right, to be one of three.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so that's, that's kind of where we are. We're, we're talking. And I, again, because I wasn't at the meeting, I'm kind of coming at this from the outside edges. Uh, we're talking about the possibility of a mass mailing to everybody in town.
Survey?
No.
Just.
Uh, just, just an announcement.
Oh, gotcha.
Uh, you know, to make people aware, we're looking at the possibility of some posters around town. And we'll probably, I think we still got a bunch of the Enfield Leaps lawn signs upstairs. And we'll probably put those out. So I, I think we'll, we'll do a pretty decent job. Of making people aware that something is happening.
Put it on the magic board too.
Oh, right. Yeah.
Oh, the magic board.
Is that what we call?
Yeah, that's what I call it.
Okay, so, yeah, magic board and uh town newsletter, listserv. Um, Facebook pages, you know, what, whatever means we have used before. And probably a couple more. So I'm, I'm hoping we'll get at least as good response. As we did when we did Phase One of the master plan. I have no reason to think we won't. Question from Sharon Buffet. Hi.
Hello.
You're muted.
You're muted.
Hi, I'm unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so this just goes back to what you were just discussing with your questionnaire. And you know, what are people willing to pay for? Um, I think it might be useful. I saw on the, um, the, one of the energy questions. I don't know if it was number five. But it had, it had a little hierarchy of how important is this to you? Um, so if there's some way that it could be built into, you know, please, if you have ten questions about. Um, um, any one of your topics that you're going to be discussing that day, if there's some way that people can, you know. Choose those, rank them. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Because if you're going to increase taxes because of those things, it'd be nice to know that it's the majority of the people. You're going after the thing that most people want. Um, so anyway, that's one way to do it. Thank you.
That, that is an excellent suggestion, and we will take you up on it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, anything else on master plan, these forums?
Well, yeah, um, so the advertisements we'll be talking about. Now, at these two forums, we're also talking about the zoning rewrite. Okay. And you said the questions are being worked on for that, yeah. Um. Yes, we'll be working on too. Okay. That's it.
Okay. Um. Next, new business. Um, Court, Tim, anything?
Leave the zoning ordinance. I just want to ask a question of the board. I think it would be really helpful if on this map, um, we were able to overlay. And I don't know that we have this information, but overlay the properties that have, are under conservation easel. I know the land trust has several, Crystal Lake, for instance.
That's on the GIS, isn't it?
I think we got it in one of the maps. That's, that's the thing I would have just thrown out there too, is that contractor for both projects. Is working on a lot of sort of uh, I'll call them accompaniments or attachments or presentation items. So that these tables will have maps. And we do have, we have a really good map developed that the master planning group has been looking at. Uh, of uh conservation lands.
Okay, so these are private lands that are under conservation easel?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Yep, thank you. Also have, I think there's one that also lists town-owned properties as well. There's recreational, trailheads. I mean, there's a lot of new GIS data that they're gonna. I think that they've showed us for the master planning task force, they've shown us like six or seven new maps that they've developed. With data that we supplied. And there's some, obviously, each one of these chapters kind of has a accompanying map or two. That go with it, which is kind of cool. And I think this map that you guys hear, that'll probably be on there as a draft new zoning map for people to look at and say, what do you think?
Yep.
Give us your feedback on this too.
Yeah, you'll have to have the old version and the new version, because a lot of people won't remember or know that old version.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Are we ready to move on? Okay, so.
So this is the new version?
That, that proposed.
Proposed with.
Well, not even proposed, yeah.
Draft.
Draft. It's our thoughts today. Definitely subject to change.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Um, I'm looking at this and I'm referring over to this map to see what's actually changed. Um, it looks to me that there's three key changes. Um, the one question I have is. What is a lake shore district? Has that uh been?
That's new.
Had in the past?
That's new.
That's new.
It's new.
Explain that to me.
Uh, basically, it's a district around each of our major water bodies. That will accomplish a few things. One is that. It will better reflect the as-built development. Because Crystal Lake is R3. And I don't think there are very many three-acre lots on Crystal Lake at this point. So rather than have to go for a zoning variance, anytime you want to.
Put a shed up.
Put a shed up, sneeze, whatever. Um, the as-built will be baked into the dimensional requirements. So, you know, we're, we're, we're still kicking around a lot of possibilities. There might be variable setbacks depending on the width of the property at the street. Uh, I mean, there, there's just a whole bunch of stuff that we've talked about. But nothing has been decided, I don't think, as a board.
Not even a draft, right?
What?
It's not even a written draft.
No, no.
I mean, the closest we got is two hundred and fifty feet from the, the waterline, because that's what the state uses. Uh, we figured, well, just, the state says two fifty feet. Um, you know, they have those certain restrictions, um, up to two hundred and fifty feet. So it's just use that as a baseline for where to draw the line, and that's where we stopped. Powers.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we, we, we've kicked around ideas, but we're, we're not even at a point where we have. Any sort of consensus amongst the board as to which of the many options that we've thrown out. Uh, we might want to pursue as the best option or the best three options to present. To the public when we get to that point.
Thank you.
Sure.
Well, no.
Um. Anything else on, on zoning, master plan? Yes.
I just want to know, for the master plan, uh, things that are available on the ninth and the eleventh, is that only for? Enfield residents that are New Hampshire residents, or is that for? Cause there's a weird feeling for people who own property like on the lake that don't live there.
If you own, if you, if you're a property owner.
Yeah.
You are definitely required to provide input. Because, because you're a stakeholder in the town.
But they, but property owners can't vote for certain.
No, you can't vote, but, but.
Fill these things out, which is kind of like hearing our, which a vote.
That's what we want.
Absolutely.
That's what we want. We want your participation. We want to hear what. Lake shore people want. We want to hear what people in a condominium development. Like Lakeside, or Anderson Hill, or Lower Shaker Village. We want to hear what their specific concerns are, and we're going to listen to them.
So I started the Crystal Lake um Facebook page for people. Is that okay? If when I hear from you guys?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. All, all, all the help that you can give us getting the word out.
We have like more than a thousand people that check out.
Good.
Yeah, fantastic.
We want more input, not less.
Yeah. I mean, you know, if you can invite people to come up for that weekend, open up their summer houses. That's great.
Or if not.
Yeah, either way. Tim?
I just noticed something on this map we ought to, we ought to address. If you looked down in the lower right corner, Eastman. Community Association boundaries.
Right.
We got the um Conservation District covering most of that. And the Rural Five covering a slight portion of it. Um, it would seem that we would want to take that. Shape, if you will. I mean, clearly that's the Eastman.
Yeah.
Boundary. As a, as a separate district.
Make it an overlay?
Take, well, no, take it out of the CB and out of the R5.
And do what with it?
And it becomes its, its own separate district.
We're just.
It is currently, it's in the conservation right now. That's where it is.
Yeah. Conflicts.
Oh, it just predated.
Right. Yeah, they just sort of stuck it in there when, when, uh.
Yeah. Well, the Conservation District was done by elevation line. So that's how, and then Eastman must have predated that decision. Well, they just ignored it, one of the two. I don't know. Um, and so, yeah, cause Eastman was in the eighties.
Yeah, early eighties.
Early eighties, and zoning was ninety.
Right.
Ninety-one, ninety-two.
Burning down two banks.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I would just do an overlay like we're doing Shaker proposing.
Well, but there's nothing in the CB district that should apply to the Eastman district.
You're saying C district, not C?
C.
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 Conservation district.
And there's nothing in the R5 that should apply to the Eastman district. So really, I agree, it's separate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I remember when I first came here, I was looking around for, where's the Eastman? And I found it in Conservise. That's the opposite.
Can you tell us, do you want to? Does anyone know if this lot is part of their community association?
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
No.
I felt the wind from that.
Yeah, it's not.
So we're really talking about that.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, over there. Down here.
And then over there to the Springfield town line.
Yeah. So.
Right.
So that's a district and a new district during the uh.
Yeah, we can just put a different color on it.
You're right.
Yeah, put a different color on it.
Yeah, I agree, Tim. That's a great idea.
Because it's what's on the ground.
Mm-hmm. Well, then I, then I'd suggest that, and this could be either Dave or Rob or be able to help with this. Um, is that we contact their association officers and the manager. And. Um, suggest to them that we're, we may propose this separate district. Perhaps even leave it a little open-ended and say, uh, think about what you might want that zoning ordinance to say in that regard.
I think the answer to that is not much because they have their own set of regulations.
Well, I agree.
And we let them do what they want to do.
Which are pretty rigorous.
Yeah.
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 Well, can't have any laws.
Right, but it's, it can go both ways. If their bylaws become less restrictive than our zoning. Then what happens?
Well.
Is the sky ever going to fall?
Yeah, that's up to them.
Right. No, no, because. But then, but then our zoning overrides, says, no, you can't do what you want, even though your bylaws say you can. Cause our zoning says you cannot do it. So if we just copy what they have, say what their current bylaws are into our zoning. And then.
Well, I looked at their, their bylaws, and they're, they're like dozens of pages. I don't think we want to do that.
Yeah, well, lock, I mean, just the land use, I mean, the lock size. Yeah, well, lot, I mean, just the land use, I mean, the lot size, well, and setbacks.
Then you then you strictly put it across whatever the Eastman bylaws are.
Let them deal with it.
Let them deal with it. So I don't think we, I don't think we want to get into that at all.
So so to the spirit of.
It's no place close to town even.
In the spirit of asking the stakeholders.
Top of the bog, bro.
What it is you want us to put in zoning ordinance, and I think we should just pose it to them like that.
Right.
And and they can have an informal discussion with you. Off home.
False speed.
And 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 yeah, it may be one pair.
Right.
Or it could be two pages, we, you know. We'll we'll come around to
No.
That issue.
I mean, really, I mean, from the town perspective, it's lot size setbacks from property lines.
Right.
And, you know, in building heights, but they.
Yeah, but which which of our zoning districts is going to address?
Well, it would, well, it would either be a standalone Eastman district. Which is, probably makes the most sense. Because it's not coming to life.
Then how would you deal with with Lower Shaker Village?
Right, ninety percent of this is developed and it's not going to become undeveloped.
Yeah, yeah.
Very few. The houses are too, the houses are too expensive that all of a sudden people are going to say we want to subdivide. Well, you're not going to be able to.
It's not gonna happen.
They're not that large a property in many cases.
Although if if their community should decide they do want to allow for subdivision, smaller.
Accessory dwelling units. Whatever.
Fine.
Yeah.
If that's what you guys want to do. Go for it.
Yeah.
So I would think just want to take hands off.
Yeah.
I don't see the point.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, we need to state. Because the present zoning was, a lot of it was written on what if this happens?
Mm-hmm.
And we need to get away from what if this happens?
Yeah. Um, any other comments at the moment for zoning?
Well, you, has it about the map specifically or?
What what whatever you want. I mean, we're 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 on the, um, top grant discussion.
Okay. Uh, Eastman, we just discussed, um, I'm questioning on the map, the green area on the eastern sides of I-89. Is.
Yeah.
Just, it doesn't make sense to me, but I would need more detail of like where the exits are and.
Do you think it should fall into the commercial?
I don't know. I I have to see, I need a better map to to, for me to, uh, come up with ideas what I think should be there.
Doesn't this correspond exactly to what we currently have?
But it doesn't show the exits.
Well, I know.
So.
Well, it. I could see the Moncom exit.
Yeah.
That's that's pretty obvious because Rice Road's coming up.
Right, I get that, but then but then there's others exits going further down that.
Well, yeah, the last one is where Evans is, Eastman's coming off.
Yeah.
The only one it's missing, and it is really missing it because the exit is actually in Grantham to where Sterns is.
Yes.
You're right, yeah, the exit's actually in Grantham, it doesn't become Enfield until you get these four blocks.
All right, so there is nothing in that.
Yeah, those those are the exits.
And there's no exit there.
They just get two exits.
A lot of those properties are landmarks.
The exit is before you get to Enfield.
Yeah, but how do you access those properties?
Well, you have to, you have to drive on Old Route 10. There's a little dirt road.
No, Route 10's on the other side.
No, no, it's Sterns property, you get it there, it's it's their properties and they they access it through there.
No, I'm thinking of the green, the green area. On the upslope side of I-89.
Yeah, that exit.
Also, Smith Pond Road going down, it's green.
Right.
How do you access those properties?
They're inaccessible. You can obviously get to these lots.
Right, 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 one.
Totally inaccessible.
They're not supporting Smith Pond Road, I understand, but it's the other properties.
You're right, they're not accessible.
Right, so then we just make a conservation man. What's what's the point?
We did have the issue.
Because as you said, conservation land is based on. Oh, no, it's not.
Currently is based on elevation.
Elevation.
So.
So what are you gonna, well.
Change the description.
Building conservation land if it's conserved.
Well, this, no, 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 Conservation District.
This this end, this that land right here is fishing game.
Yeah.
Right.
And I see that it's got part of the R5 is across that, that doesn't really make a lot of sense. Should just go right to the interstate. Right, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it doesn't make sense to have that little block there as is labeled as Prop 5. And all the permitted uses.
Do we know about those two smaller blocks as to who owns them?
No.
Because if you, if if they're privately owned and they're not conserved, they may have, they may have the right to build on them.
One of them is the guy with the Igloo House on the other side.
Exactly.
But you still have to get there.
You do. And I could get a driveway permit to go up there. To one lot.
He's been talking to Mattville about selling it to him, which would.
Right.
He would probably annex it to his property that's on some Bond Road.
Yeah.
We did grant a variance there for use, Mattville has commercial use there with this carpentry shop.
Right.
That was one of those ones I told you guys, my preference would be not to have one side of the road be possible for uses and the other side not.
Right.
But obviously, you got to draw the line somewhere, so.
Right.
That's a larger discussion, I guess.
Anyways, I'm just think that needs to be looked at for the detail.
I think you're right.
Because in R5, you're gonna have certain things allowed and it's just like, what's the point of having that? Just out there, out there like that.
It's basically just timber. It's all of this.
And there's still a question about Smith Pond CI area. I just think that's excessive there. Uh, let me see, 4A.
Although. There are three or four major businesses there now.
Exactly.
Mm-hmm, Chippers is one of them.
Oh, lower down, lower down, not um, just the way the map is, because it was done, because the Conservation District was done by elevation.
Right.
That's why you have this weird boundary line here.
And I think we should adjust that to where on the, we probably ought to look at the Conservation District in several areas to where it it should extend down to the.
A natural, a natural boundary line.
Yeah.
Well, a bu, a physical boundary line versus a artificial.
Right.
Well, what do you mean by that?
Well, I mean, something that you can physically see on the ground, like a road, a stream, um, a body of water versus a elevation that's goes up and down and all over the place.
So would you say you extend the R5 all the way down, the green, all the way down to the green?
Well, um, you draw down Smith Ponds?
Yeah.
No, I would do conservation all the way down to would be my preference. That green area. And, you know, and just same as the, the, um, the north side of the um, Smith Pond Road where it's labeled as commercial. Come up with a better description of where the boundary line is going to be drawn, so. It just makes more logical sense.
Uh, Sharon has her hand up. Sharon, buffet?
Yes, hi. Um, it dawned on me, it dawned on me, gentlemen, while you're going through this, and I'm going back to the, um, possible forum that's going to happen in May, um, about zoning. There, in the master plan that is already developed, there is a lot in there about housing. There is a lot in there about preserving rural character in Enfield. And I don't. Mr. Dean, you had said something about, you know, like we were too strict on zoning because we were afraid of what would happen, and now we shouldn't really worry about what will happen. I think you've already gone through a process as a town with the master plan that really should be a guide that you guys are using as a reference that the public has already decided what they want to see. And as you're looking at zoning and thinking about what could happen, um, people, including me, love this town because of a rural character. I'm not preventing development. But but, you know, those things go hand in hand, and it's fine to say to somebody, what would you like? But people have to really consider, what does that mean? Um, so I just ask you to 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 use the documents that you already have and are only a couple of years old as your guide as you're going through this process, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Um, I'd like to think that we are going back to the master plan and to some of the zoning areas that were very roughly sketched in. And now we're trying to further define them.
Yeah, I into to Kurt's point, another thing, I think, I think this conservation district should be massaged a bit like the way it is. Uh, again, this fishing game land, where it and below the the conservation elevation line, the whole thing should be just conserva, yeah, all the way over here to Gooseberry.
Yeah.
Jordan Road is.
Yeah.
And it it's not, it, there's quite a green along the road, along both roads.
Yeah, yeah.
But you're just extended to the road. This section here has part CB and part R5. Why don't you make it all R5? It's a private, you know, private land here.
Yeah.
It's it's things like that.
Yeah.
I think we should go around the boundary and.
Yeah.
But that would take, um, that would better be done with a small group with citizen set aside some time and go through that lot by lot and then come back to the board with a recommendation.
Yeah, I mean, same as I'm looking at Enfield Center now, it has the overlay, but the underlying is R5. I mean, I it's just, I don't know, I don't know where it's.
Yeah, I don't really, that's not really what I had in mind either there.
I mean, R3 maybe, just extend the R3 down.
And maybe, maybe Enfield Center doesn't become its own district this time around.
Yeah.
It just stays in the R5 where it's all.
Yeah.
Well, then you run into the same problem with the, that you have on Lake Shore where nothing's applying.
You do.
Right, and anytime someone wants to put up a shed, they they got to go to the.
But again, a small group, we need to get together and study that particular area, drive out.
True, but the overlay solves that problem in the interim.
Well, I mean, I think the overlay for the center was.
Arbitrary.
I think my impression was the Enfield Center district was going to allow for certain types of businesses there. Sort of have its own little business community. Something like the concept of West Lebanon. Or not 12A, the other side, the other side, the other side of where, um, the feed store is.
Do we use the Enfield Village, make it a bar Enfield Village District?
Well, it doesn't have water and sewers, I think, I think.
Yeah, I know, but that's, but that has, Enfield Village District has special things for people who are on sewer.
Yeah.
Right?
And it also has areas that don't have sewer.
Exactly, exactly, because it doesn't, it's going all the way up to Livingston Lodge Road.
Yeah.
Where it isn't sewer, but it just, we've said specifically that that's where it's going to end. Where those two come together.
Well, first, I I you may be right, Dan, I think you may be right. Uh, it could be that it's the same exact paragraph over here. But we needed to find the boundary.
Well, it could be the people that live there like.
Yeah.
Keeping it just very more low-key.
Well, and and that's what we would do with a focus group, say, this is the boundary we kind of have in mind.
Yeah.
Uh, what do you guys want us to put in the zoning ordinance that supports your community the way you want it?
So let's add Enfield Center residents and business owners to the list of uh, focus groups, get togethers, whatever, you know, like like we're meeting with with lake people. And condominium people.
I guess this.
This sort of happens.
I mean, Enfield Center only really has two businesses I can think of, well, to stand out. I mean, there's some home shop businesses that are just in someone's home.
Yeah.
Working out of the garage.
Right.
So it doesn't look like a business. I mean, there's practice and then set building, art tech, what used to be.
Used to be art tech and now it's Service Master.
Yeah.
Surf.
Surf pro, yeah.
Yeah. I think the original master, the original zoning was that that was going to become a sort of business area, but never evolved.
Well, I don't know that 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 business should be part of that district, and I'm not sure that's the main focus. I recall a situation where we had a property owner in here that wanted to, he wanted a few hundred feet of one lot to be added to his and.
Right, yeah.
We couldn't come up with a compliant lot size.
Mm-hmm.
It's like what the heck?
Well, we couldn't do it because it made one more non-conformity.
Yeah, and.
Even though it made sense.
No one really cared.
And nobody cared. And he didn't want to have to go to zone.
They're in the R5 district and it's going to be done.
Awful.
But that that issue comes up with, could happen with any lot that's.
Yeah, I think we're getting in the weeds.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's the one.
Which is why I keep saying we need a focus group to get in the weeds.
But I think that focus group has to be after this.
Yes, yeah, definitely.
Right.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Because there are going to be people, I suspect, from Enfield Center there who are going to care.
Yeah, I mean.
Which is the other thing we may want to do, when we have people fill things out, is where do you live?
Yeah.
What what's, what is your, what is either your address? What is your property?
Which are near me, so.
So I don't care if you're a resident, who can vote? I just need to know what your property address is.
Right.
Do do do, do we want to have these questions answered anonymously or with
Oh, yeah.
or with identifiable data so we can get back to them and invite them to be part of a focus group?
Get an address, you know who they are.
Again?
You have the property address on the thing, then.
Well, I just, even if it's just a street.
Yeah.
Did not a street number.
Or a section of town.
Or a section.
You just, you leave a put your contact information if you want to participate.
Optional.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, but just.
But just tell us where you live, what part of town.
Yeah, do you live on Crystal Lake or do you live on Methodist Hill Road?
Right, exactly.
Yeah. Yeah, we.
Okay, all right. Um, can we move on to the final business item?
Sure.
Okay, thanks. Uh, the town is interested in disposing of two parcels, actually three, I think. Uh, the Shed Street property and one of the Johnson Road, very small, tiny lots, I think it's Lot 6. According to RSA fourteen, uh, rather, forty-one colon fourteen A, all sales of town-owned property have to be run by the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission, so. Do we have any? Do we have any comments on the sale of? Let's start, let's take, uh, Shed Street first because we're probably more familiar with those lots. We made it its own little zoning overlay district.
So the town has incurred costs to, uh, remedy the issues there, right? The buildings are down.
Correct, yes.
Yeah.
Right? And it was the intention, the reason to do that was to sell those lots, recoup those costs.
Mm-hmm.
And hopefully, um, have those.
Bring housing.
Bring housing in.
Mm-hmm.
Right, that was the goal.
Right.
Although the, uh, you know, the documentation that we will put out to attract attention will not limit it to housing. What, we'd like some creative thinking.
Sure, sure.
Yeah. But, you know, we've been talking about getting rid of the Shed Street property for years now. So anything we can do to expedite that, we much.
Those are governments' responsibility.
So what did our, uh, what did our zoning district there?
Yeah.
In, in, just in general terms, what does it permit?
Uh, dense housing.
So if you wanted to use it for a. Something other than housing.
If you wanted to put a general store there, I'm not sure you could do that. If you wanted to put a. Workshop factory, I'm quite sure that at the very least it would require a special exception. Uh, variance, I, I don't think that's part of what we had in mind when we made the Shed Street zoning district.
And the selectmen obviously are not going to. Jump at an offer that does not make sense to the town.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Right, but at the same time, you don't want to shut anybody down in terms of ideas.
Right, right.
But you, but you can't sell it to someone who's planning to put a auto body repair shop there.
Right, right. We wouldn't.
That's, you know.
Just wouldn't sell it, right?
It's an open RFP. Yeah, yeah. There you go.
I think there was a discussion that, at one of the recent select board meetings that, um, the RFP for, um, that property. Um, would include, um, that, uh, housing was a, a high priority. Um, and that gives the leeway to the select board to, um, to make those choices. And I just have to go to the highest bidder.
Well, uh. And select board could, I think, uh, I'm not sure what the process to do this, but if you wanted to provide that. That property, um, for free to, uh, an entity that was going to do something specific that you wanted to encourage. You could do that, right?
I think we'd be run out of town on a rail target. Gave it away for free.
But you could do it in theory.
In theory, probably true, in theory, yeah.
In, in practice, I think John values his life.
Well, lady on the computer.
Oh, how about if I make a motion?
Um, Linda has a comment.
Okay.
Linda?
Yes, um, we had talked previously about workforce housing. And that would be something to consider in a proposal and the selling price for the. Um. Well. Just, just having workforce housing or elderly housing, I guess it doesn't lend itself to elderly housing, but it does to workforce housing. And that's, that's, we're supposed to have it in our. You, you said largest district, but could large be considered most dense district? As it is our most dense district.
No. It's largest. Um, I'm gonna make a motion, we recommend to the select board that they sell the property.
Second.
Do a, okay, motion made and seconded, uh, roll call, Linda.
I agree.
John?
Yes.
Dan? I vote aye.
Phil votes aye.
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 Unanimous. Um, we recommend to the select board that they dispose of. The Shed Street lots, uh. Using an RFP from.
No, no.
We don't have to do that, you're.
We just recommend the sale. They can do it any way they want to.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Um, the other lot is a very small, tiny lot on Johnson Drive.
It is, um, it's Lot Six and it is, uh, was the recommendation from the committee.
Okay. Uh, is there any other discussion on Lot Six?
The only thing about Lot Six is that it has to, um, I think we have to give first right refusal.
Yeah, option.
As a.
Yeah. That is correct.
So how did that come about? I mean, what was the background?
Irrelevant to us. Yeah. It, it goes all the way back to railroad times, you know, so. I couldn't give you the details.
Pass me later.
We don't have to actually. Tender, uh, an opinion on this, do we?
I think we do.
Yes, we have to recommend.
Why not recommend?
Why not?
We, we have to make, yeah.
But it's only a recommendation.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I know absolutely nothing about this parcel nor any of the circumstances around it and I feel like, uh.
It's nine hundredths of an acre that is as close to being landlocked as not.
The quick version is that there were four lots that were, that ended up in the control of the town.
Right there.
Right? And the, the two center lots, uh, four and five were the premium lots in terms of beach. Uh, you've, you've swung there. And so in the process of the, the committee, it was, um, agreed upon that the town keep the two in the center. For to retain it as is, walk in mostly from the rail train. The little Lot Six on the end would sell and then Lot Three, although it's still, is still under lease. Once that does not become, um, uh, is not involved in a lease, that parcel would be sold too. That was the recommendation of the committee.
So.
Why, why did the, the. Why did you recommend the, the lot on the south side be sold?
Lot Six?
Yes.
Because it was so tiny and it's of, of no use to the property. What would you do with something like that? You'd sell it to someone who's interested in it and make a few bucks and it comes back into the tax rolls.
Okay.
Same with Lot Three. So it was a compromised decision of the eight people on that committee, of which I was one.
Dr. Muffet, did you have a comment?
I covered it.
Okay.
Covered it.
Um.
I mean, I, I guess what I'm. What I'm kind of aggravated about. Asked to. Consider the sale of a property, we'd be given absolutely no information to base our recommendation on, other than what we might have already known about.
Well, if I could make a, a, a brief response to that. Uh, we have had a committee. That spent a great deal of time, carefully chosen committees.
Six months, two meetings per month.
Coming up with this decision. The, the Board of Selectmen totally agrees with that committee unanimously. Uh, and. If you said. You disagree with that. That would be a very difficult thing, wouldn't it?
Yes.
Because you're going against a, 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 a well-thought-out process that worked perfectly. And I guess our feeling was, no one conceived that you would need documentation for this. That you could just accept. The decision of the Board of Selectmen and the committee. Go along with it.
And the, the minutes of that committee are in the website. Um, there's been extensive meetings and discussion, I was not a member of the committee per se, but attended all the meetings. Um, and, um, I, I think, I, I agree with you, John, that it was probably the best process, even though I didn't necessarily agree with every single. Bit of the, um, uh, decision-making. Um, it's, it, it was, it was the best process I've seen in town in a long time.
Right.
It, it was well-vetted.
I make a motion that we recommend the planning.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, my hand has been up, please.
Okay, go for it.
I can still make a motion.
Well, let, let Linda have a.
Well, I would like to address the issue. I think I. If I were on that committee, I would not have voted to sell it. I think that many people are trying to make a compromise and be able to say. Oh, well, I, I want to put the money back into the town, but I think it'll ta- take, it'll bring in so little money. And if you've ever been down there. Um, it, it's a little nice piece of beach on the lake, it's. The size of a couple blankets practically. But it, it extends the use of the park and makes it a little bigger. And because it will bring so little money, I think it's short-sighted of the town to sell off, uh, lake frontage. And, um, and I think that, John, to your issue that it's, you know, well-thought-out. When the selectmen chose to sell all the land that went with the Enfield Center townhouse. They felt they were making a very good decision because that put the money back into the town. Only in retrospect, in hindsight, we see that there could have been a lot better use. For those dollars you got at that time and this little tiny piece may be one of those things.
And, you know, in some ways, I understand completely what you're saying here and, and where you're coming from. And I have made the comments myself publicly at select board meetings that, you know, I was against selling any of it. As I said, you know, there's no more lake frontage being created. But. Mine was a, I decided the right thing to do would be to join my fellow selectmen in the unanimous decision. And honor also the hard work of the committee. And. It's a matter of compromise. Because the other side of it is, there were people who wanted to sell it all. Exactly right. Because you could put a million dollar house there and it would have been in big time taxes, so. Um, you know, I, I constantly remind people that the town had the opportunity to buy. All the sandy beach practically at the end of the lake that belonged to the hotel. Half of the hotel was already torn down and the town refused. And I don't think it ever came to public vote, it was the selectmen refused. So. Rise me nuts.
David?
I also during the process, uh, uh, agree with Lynn and John and again oppose the sale of any of that properties quite vigorously. Uh, but I think. I and the town in its various capacities needs to honor that process.
Yep, yeah, I'm absolutely correct. That the worst thing in the world is to have a committee work hard, come up with a good balanced decision and then ignore it. Why would anyone join a committee?
I think that. I, I don't object to the, the decision at all, it's just that, uh, if the planning board's going to be asked to consider the sale of a property. Then the planning board should be presented with the pros and cons and. Picture, a, a site plan or whatever, uh, as to why.
Have any report?
Something. Uh, we just got nothing, I, I don't, I don't, I have not been following the Johnson property. Issue close enough to know all of this stuff, to know what the committee's recommended, I haven't even read their report. That's all I was saying, so I am very persuadable of these issues and just, just need something. And now we've, we've been given that, we've asked for it, we've talked about it, so.
Well, I, I think what, what you're looking for is you're looking for all of the information. That the committee digested. And so, well, no, you, you're, you're certainly looking for the plots and the map and the pros and.
Just some sort of brief presentation as to why we want to sell this and then you're asking for our recommendation and then we can get, that's all.
And, and the thought was that this is a formality and I get that and you're looking for it a little bit more than that.
Well, it doesn't, it's being treated as a formality.
Yes.
Here's our question.
I'm not gonna read that.
I mean, but it's in the RSA's for a reason and it's, you know, the same as a developer coming in and saying. You know, something beyond a conceptual coming in for, and I want you to approve my plan, but I'm not going to provide you with any information.
You know, maybe a, a, a way to, the best way to handle this is to watch Nate's presentation to the Board of Selectmen. It was about a half hour that he presented to the five board members that was very complete and comprehensive. And actually, you're, you're looking at it here, where you could actually watch it and see the, the questions, so those, go back up. Yeah, th- those are the lots right there. But we're talking about six, which is real tiny, and you can't reach six from the access point of four and five.
I wouldn't.
It, it's blocked. And, and so it's, there's no way to access that little piece. So it is, it is basically worthless to most people unless you plan to utilize it through the lake only. Or the rail trail only, or, uh, the neighbor, which is, uh, on the other side of the rail tracks there. But in any event, maybe that's the best thing to do is that for homework, we all go back and, and watch that thirty-minute presentation.
Yeah, if somebody wants to make a motion to, uh, table this discussion, that might be in order.
Well, we'll do that on my.
I make the motion, we approve, had the planning board approves it.
All right, we have a motion on the table, does somebody want to second it?
I'll second it.
We have a motion with a second. Is there any discussion? Are we ready for a vote? Roll call vote, Linda, how do you vote?
No.
John?
Yes.
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 Yes, yes, no.
You want me to vote?
No.
No.
He always looks at you. Don't look at him if you don't want him to vote.
Looking beyond him. Um. So, uh, I believe the motion has passed, uh, with one dissenting vote.
Two.
Two, I'm sorry.
Three dissenting.
And, and, uh, five positive.
Yeah.
I, I certainly understand why they're voting no.
Yeah.
I guess.
Yeah, yeah. Something we'll keep in mind in future.
And for what it's worth, I did ask the town manager for anything. And, uh. What I learned was that this was just. Essentially the formality. To comply with the RSA. And.
But I think that in, to Tim's point, in order to really make it a more, yeah, right? I mean, I'm, I'm intimately familiar with it because I was on the game.
Yeah.
But, but we as board members should have.
We should have something.
Should have a small property, a one-page.
I, I, I think you're right. I agree where, with, where Tim is coming from.
Yeah, I, I agree.
And, uh, John, maybe you'll, you'll take that note back to the board and the town manager.
Of course, we'll never have a property. It was sold for another ten years or so.
Oh, no.
He got it in two months.
Methodist Hill.
Oh, so, okay, well.
And then there's that other lot in the Johnson property, right? Which is a beautiful, beautiful lot.
Yep, it is.
I love it.
Yeah.
Three or four or five?
Three.
Three, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Four and five has been, the decisions have been made to just leave it down access on the rail trail. Um, but three is a nice.
For now. Yeah, three's a nice lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the plan is that there may be spaces made for two handicapped automobiles. Uh, other than that, walking, bicycling.
Recommendation, it's gonna be hard to voice, was it three or six to be sold?
Just six.
Six. Three, two, but later, but it's still under.
Once the lease is over, yeah.
Somebody's still. It's a lifetime lease.
It can't be too much longer.
It really is a bizarre sort of situation.
Yeah.
Those railroad lots.
All right.
It's very bizarre.
Old business, anything anybody else wants to discuss? Next meeting is April twenty-four.
I make a motion, we adjourn?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, uh, we've got to do a roll call, Linda, come back.
Aye.
Linda says aye, John?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Oh, call it eight twenty.
Thank you, people.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.